I mean, it's not, you know.
Here we go. Call to order, the city council meeting for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. Could I get a roll call, please? Gesmi?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Jefferson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Cronenberger?
Here.
Lundell?
Here.
Montgomery? Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Lundell, second from Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us to public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Kurt, the floor is yours.
And thanks for listening today, guys. Um, I don't know if this is a dead subject, and I thought there was still going to be some discussion about the go-kart track going up by the fairgrounds. Um, I wasn't here last time. I had another meeting to go to, but I'm just in general, just to speak of this a little bit, I was wondering what the type of vehicles or what kind of go-karts are going to be up there, if they're 125 cc ones. I don't know enough about that, but just for reference, I just want to play this, and this is the sound that we would be listening to about.
At the very bottom.
Can you hear me now? Okay. This is, I'm sorry, this is 125 cc go-karts right here. So this, and you can multiply that by 10, okay? That's what we would be listening to. And what happens is that people say, well, it's not the decibel, you know, how many decibels is it? It's not always the decibels, it's the intensity, it's the vibration, it's the RPMs, the amplitude. Um, we are going to be subjected to that eight summers, or eight Saturdays out of the summer, sometimes even more. I know there's been discussion that they may have snowmobiles in the wintertime. Now it's snowmobile racing. I don't know enough about it, other than the fact this is what I've been told. Um, I don't want to go off of just hearsay. However, I, I still hope that the board will look at this because I think it still needs attention. I think a lot of people haven't shown up this evening because they think it's, it's, to them, it's frivolous. Now, the dirt work has already started. If you go back there, the dirt works, half of it's done, um, which makes a lot of people think, what's the point? And, and you almost feel helpless with that. Um, I'm not saying it's, it's not, for some people, it's great. People that love dirt track racing and all that, they think it's the best thing for them, and I'm not out to discredit anybody on the, on the fair board, anything like that, but what's in the best interest of other people? I know that the, the fair board is its own entity, they're sovereign, if you will, but at this point, what's the role of the city council? I think it's to do what's best for the residents of the city and what's in their best interest, not in what's in the fair board's best interest. And I think that's what's the issue, is like, well, we don't have any rights because their fair board has their own sovereign, sovereignty, and they have, can make their own rules. But the rules and statutes probably don't apply at this point. This would, I think the statutes were, are 40, 50 years old. I think they need to be readdressed. And I just want that to be taken into consideration. Prescott tried doing this to their city, I think it was three years ago, and the city council was able to come in and vote it down because it wasn't what was best for the residents of the city of Prescott. So as much as I want to do things that's good for the kids, I don't want to play on the heartstrings of that, and I think that's what's happening too. Um, I think we still have to do what's best for the community. And I think if you look at, we're not affecting just the people that are overlooking just the fair board or the fairgrounds. Step back two, three blocks and take a walk down the streets, and you will hear that, because if you're, if you're listening to what it sounds like during the fair, you can hear that resonate through the whole valley. And on a Saturday night, when that's when most people like to appreciate their time off, that's going to be taken away from us. We do have a right to enjoyment of our property. If this wasn't something that was approved by the fair board, Joe, I think you'd be up, up at our place, and you'd probably saying, hey, here, this is a noise ordinance, you can't do this. But because it's approved, I guess it's okay. And I, I just don't see that being good for everybody. So just hope you look at what's in the best interest of the people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, nobody else has signed up for public input, so we will move on to our presentation tonight. So Goodhue County Recycling Program, and is it Will Root?
Yes, Willie Root.
Willie?
Yes.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. I don't know if the presentation is, no?
Do you have a laptop on you to connect, or?
I don't have a laptop. I, I, I have a thumb drive with the presentation on it, but.
I guess.
Oh.
Oh, yep.
That's different.
It's powered on.
Yeah.
Is there a light switch, light switch on there, or no? I think we can switch that to.
Let me get this presentation I'm looking for.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, look at that. Okay. So I, I won't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to update you with what, what's going on with our recycling and hazardous waste programs. Boy, I'm not used to speaking into microphones. So, uh, we, first of all, I want to start by apologizing because Goodhue County, um, my department, the, the solid waste department, we set the recycling program in motion years ago and just kind of let it go. You know, we, we did education outreach for a while, we were at the fair for a while, and we were getting the word out, and, and it worked great. People were recycling, um, everything was clean, it was great. And then we just kind of drifted away from the education. So I'd like to apologize for that, and I know that's where a lot of this confusion comes from as to what we're doing nowadays. So with that, let's, let's dive right into it. Um, garbage is, can be anything, all right? It, uh, anything you can think of can go in the garbage can, right? Your old, old tires, furniture, bottles, whatever. It, it, but where does it go? You know? Um, do you know where your garbage goes when it's picked up? Any, does anybody? That's right. Well, that's right. So, so nowadays, um, all the garbage collected in, in Goodhue County does go to the inciner, well, not the incinerator, Red Wing's waste campus where it's processed, shredded up, and burned at the Excel incinerator in Red Wing. Produces energy, which is great. Other people's garbage outside of the county, sometimes it can go to a landfill, or it goes to a transfer station and it's hauled somewhere else. So, but you put it at the curb, it goes away, right? That's a great thing. Landfills, waste of energy, like I mentioned, you can see that picture in the middle is the Excel incinerator in Red Wing. What happens when people start doing things like this? They, they don't want to pay for the garbage service, or they don't, they, they just throw it out the back 40. I know my, my dad is like that. My dad's old school, and he still, he had a, he had a pile out in the back part of his farm where he would throw the bottles and jars, the things that he couldn't burn, right? So that, that's the way people used to get rid of it. There's another picture of it, and more. These aren't in Goodhue County, these are pictures I, I got off the internet. So enough about garbage, let's talk about recycling. Um, we've been, the recycling program in Goodhue County has been going on since 92, I believe it is, when we, when we built a recycling center in Red Wing. And at that point, it was mainly a drop-off and a spot for the city of Red Wing's curbside pickup to come in and drop their recycling. We processed it. It was, it was what we call a source-separated recycling center, which means you, and you, everybody separates it at home, brings it to us, separated, we pack it together and then ship it off to a market, and it's made into other products. Still the same principle, although now, uh, in Red Wing, we have the 24-hour drop-off, and we also have recycling boxes we've placed around the different towns in the county. Maybe many of you have used the one here in Cannon Falls at the pool. You know, we have the, the, the boxes there for everything, anything and everything, your bottles, your cardboard, paper, anything you can think of. And then we bring it back to our facility and we process it.
Can I ask you to stop right there?
Yes.
Those boxes are absolutely wonderful. I think there are a lot of people that put the wrong thing in the wrong place. What happens? Is that extra labor for you, or is there ever a threat that those things would be taken away, or what happens when our citizens puts the wrong thing in there?
Thank you for asking that, because that, that was the main reason why I wanted to come tonight, is to talk about that. Um, and I know it's a small fraction of people that are doing this. The majority of the people do the right thing. They recycle right, they try to recycle right. Um, some people do what a, a term I learned from a, a person here in, from Cannon Falls, um, she used to come and volunteer at our has-waste collection. She taught, taught me a term called wish cycling, wish recycling, where you throw anything and everything. Well, it's plastic, it's got to be recyclable. It's not exactly true with our program. So to your question, it is a lot of extra labor, and it's a lot of extra cost because it goes in the garbage, and, you know, our garbage fills up a lot more, a lot faster than it used to. So that's why I came tonight, was to kind of reiterate, and that's what this packet is that I gave you. It's got a little bit of, it's got information on everything that we do, and I hope that you share it with your friends and family, and at the coffee shop, and wherever you're, you're talking about trash and recycling. I know it happens all the time, right? So why, why should we recycle? Uh, here in Minnesota, the answer is obvious. We live in a beautiful state. We have a lot of, um, wonderful things to enjoy here. Fishing, uh, obviously, everybody enjoys the outdoors. You're farming, everything. I put this picture in because it's, it's kind of funny. Why should I recycle? Here's another example of a, a junk house. This is in Goodhue County. That yellow sign you see on the tree, I made that. I put it up in our recycling center. These guys who had, had this house stole it from our recycling center, put it on their tree. I ended up having to go out there a couple of, couple of months later to do a cleanup on this place, and I saw that, and I thought, that is, that is just great. That is just great. Again, why should I recycle? Because it'll, it'll reduce the amount of trash that goes to get burned or into a landfill or just, you know, thrown away. A lot, a lot of things are recyclable that you may not know about. Um, the way we do it, like I said, is a source-separated. It's not as easy as going, taking all your recyclables and throwing them into one can, and it goes away. It might take a few more seconds just to sort out, oh, your glass goes in here, your cardboard goes over there, your plastic bottles go here. It doesn't take that much longer. So we do it that way to save costs. It, we don't, we don't have many employees at the recycling center. There are four of us working there. And we separate the recycling that comes in from all over the county and in our drop-off shed. So that, um, that is why we do the source separated, because it's an easy resource when we have people doing it themselves. What we do at the recycling center, um, that bottom picture on the, the bottom right, you can see the trucks come in, we unload them, they dump into these, these hoppers, they go to another place for separating out, and then we, we squeeze them up into bales, and then ship the bales of the separate materials out to, uh, plants that will make them into new products. What we offer, um, I don't know, does the city of Cannon Falls have their, their waste hauler here, do they have curbside recycling? Okay. So what we offer is complementary to that. I don't, I don't know if your curbside recycler will take, um, batteries, probably not. We have a bucket at our recycling box for household batteries, little batteries. What about, trying to think, tin cans, yeah, you probably can do that, glass bottles. So may, maybe it'll offer you, if you have more than will fit in your container, you can bring it to us. Or people who don't have the city service, that's why we offer the boxes around the county. They can come and put their recycling in there. This is what we do. Um, plastics one and two only. That's it. That's all we have markets for. I know people want to do the right thing. Most people do want to do the right thing, but they throw everything in there. This time of year, let me just send out a plea. Please don't put in any more landscaping, um, plastics in the recycling. This time of year, we get the, uh, that plastic border, we get the, the mulch bags, the flower pots, oh, anything and everything, it is not recyclable. I know you want to do the right thing and, and, and do that, but it's not recyclable. We have, well, um, maybe that top one, I should put an asterisk. Used oil and oil filter disposal, um, that's at a recycling center. We just recently had to pull the, the stair, the plug on the used oil tank at our recycling center because that has been abused. Um, uh, it's a sad story. But, but there is used oil recycling at the Wanamingle landfill. Um, what else do we have? There's a drop-off spot for clothing, fluorescent bulbs, and batteries. So that's, that's what we do in a nutshell. That, that top left picture, that is, that's our 24-hour recycling shed. That's what it looked like one morning, and when the weather turns nice in the spring, everybody comes out of hibernation and they start recycling. There, we couldn't keep, we can't keep up with it. So it, it goes everywhere, but that's what we do. We do that, we have the boxes coming in, and on the bottom, that's what our center looks like. What we don't do, and I, I try to reiterate this, this is what we don't do. We don't have mixed recycling, we don't have where you pull the recycling out of garbage. Um, there are places that do that, where they bring it all in the same container, and then you have hundreds of people on a recycling line pulling, pulling it apart. That's expensive because you have to pay all those employees. That's why we do it the way we do it, so keep the cost down. You do the separating, and we pick it up and, and do the final sort and package it for market. All right, let's move on to has-waste collections. Many of you are familiar with it. Uh, you, you utilized it in Cannon Falls or anywhere else. You can come to any of the collections. Um, the Cannon Falls collections are always big events. They, a lot of people use it, which is great. Um, we're, we've reduced our program down to one collection a year in each city, mainly because it, it was precipitated by COVID, and then also our, the county's insurance carrier. In the past, we used to have these major events with volunteers would come and help us, and it was great. Got a lot of hazardous waste out of the system, and the volunteers that we had were wonderful. But our insurance company said, I, you're, you're having the volunteers do what? They're touching the stuff? We don't, we don't want you to do that. So, so again, we have limited staff, so we reduced it to one collection a year over a longer time period. It's, it's four-hour collection now. So we'll be in Cannon Falls in August, just so you know. I think it's August 2nd or 3rd, whatever that first Tuesday is in August, out at Lake Billsby. That's what a has-waste collection looks like. We come and set up in a truck, um, you drive through, we unload your car, and then we sort it out and package it up and get it out there. And this is for households only. It's not, unfortunately, businesses are, we're not allowed to take business hazardous waste. There are other means for them to do it, if anybody has questions. Why do we collect it? Because we don't want it out in the environment. It's bad. Um, a lot of bad things can happen if it gets spilled or misplaced. Um, also, we do it because times have changed. Here's an old ad for DDT. You know, back in the day, that was great. We loved it. It did, it did what you wanted it to do. Get rid of the bugs, uh, anything you wanted to get rid of. Yeah, we found out it's not so good. Makes people sick. So things change. You have these old chemicals. We still get DDT to this day at these collections. So it's, it's a way to get rid of the stuff you don't normally know how to get rid of. You can't throw it in your trash, it's not, it doesn't go in the recycling. What do I do with it? Bring it to me, we'll take care of it. Where do I get rid of? Tires. Good question. At Wanamingle landfill or the city of Red Wing's waste campus? Waste appliances, electronics, same thing. Landfill or the Red Wing waste campus. And you can see on the bottom there, furniture, Wanamingle landfill, Red Wing waste campus. Easy. Um, we do all this because we don't want to see garbage dumps everywhere, to protect your health and the environment's health, and leave a, a, a wonderful place for your children to grow up and your grandkids to grow up. You know, we had a great place, but why, why shouldn't we be able to pass that on? And to protect our drinking water. Yeah, we want to protect that. Why? It's because, uh, well, you, I don't know if many of you know, but if, if your well water gets contaminated, it costs a lot of money to replace that. We don't want to do that. City well, same thing. You know, that, if you have to replace that, that's going to be a lot of question, I mean, a lot of money. Any questions? Uh, my information is on the packet I handed you. Okay? Oh, here's, thank you for printing this out. This is wonderful. And this is just a brief, I wanted to start with this, why, how not to recycle. So you see this, it's a pickup truck full of hazardous waste. Uh, that, I came over to Cannon Falls one morning, we had a call that there was, somebody had dropped some hazardous waste off at the recycling boxes. It, it was a whole pickup truckload they had left there. Um, that's something we don't, that's, that's not, uh, how to do it. So that, that was an example. How not to recycle. Here is, um, here a cardboard hopper at our recycling center, says no styrofoam, and right underneath it, you can see the styrofoam. That, that gray stuff is like that foamy wrap. That is wonderful. Here's one of our boxes. We opened up the back where the plastic is. This is a box from Cannon Falls. There is a, there is someone here in this area that recycles appliances and electronics. My guess is they're not licensed to do that, but they put the plastic in here thinking it's recyclable, which is, I guess, kind of good, but it's not. And, and we, yeah. I'd like to, I, he must do a great job because there's a lot of that stuff, he or she, I don't know who's doing it. There's concrete in with our cardboard. Makes it real hard to process that, because we have to go through every box, and it, and it's, um, yeah, with four people, it's kind of hard to do. There's another one, cardboard, but yeah, it, it, that's not how to do recycling. Um, this one, we had an issue with, in Zambroda for many years of somebody, every week would put cat litter, cat, in the box, in, in the recycling, every week, and I couldn't, we couldn't figure out how. There was so much of it, and, and it wasn't like they left it in the bag, they dumped it in there. That's not how, we, we, we try, we try to avoid that. There's a, there's glass in with the magazines. We were emptying the magazines, and somebody had thrown all their clear glass into it, which is funny because right next to it on the box is the clear, clear glass door. So, so we try to avoid that. Here's a good one. Um, this was the, we were emptying the glass, and it was full of broken four-foot fluorescent tubes. You are correct, yes.
Was that you, Steve?
Not bottles and jars.
Was that you that did that?
We get tires. Those don't go in the recycling box. Those, those would come to the landfill or city of Red Wing. Here's another example of, I, I'm guessing it was newspaper, but it's, doesn't look like much newspaper. Oh, if I can, just, uh, just pass the word on, I don't know if you have friends or family that get those food kits, you know, delivered, those boxes, the food prep meals, uh, they come in a nice cardboard box, which is great, but the liners usually aren't recyclable. And we get a lot of those, if you could, yeah. That, and I'm not singling out Cannon Falls, this happens all over the county. I'm just, I was luckily enough that you allowed me on your agenda. You're the first stop. So this is our, our chance to, um, educate. These were dropped off at the Pine Island These were dropped off at the Pine Island box one day. Those are the two part foam tanks. Those are not recyclable. Those are hazardous waste and that's going to cost a lot of money to get rid of. So that's probably why they threw that in there. A wheelchair, a box full of styrofoam and our boxes say no styrofoam.
What do you do with styrofoam?
I'm sorry?
What can you do with styrofoam? Just garbage?
Throw it away in the garbage. Unfortunately, it's not recyclable.
Okay.
We are discussing a way of maybe in the future, taking it and condensing it down and finding someplace to ship it out because we, we get a ton of it.
Oh, no.
This is, this is really bad. So this came in, in our cardboard box and we, as you can see, it's a drill with a 20 volt lithium battery. And when you squeeze lithium batteries, they tend to explode and burst into flames. And when we push our cardboard onto the conveyor belt, it goes into a compactor and we squish it into a big bale. We had a fire one day in there. Didn't see the battery go up the conveyor belt. It was underneath the cardboard. We saw the smoke coming out of the compactor. We had to quick, I don't know how they did it, but they got the bale out and we took it outside so it didn't catch the facility on fire. I don't know if you've seen in the news, there's a lot of fires at these recycling facilities because of these lithium batteries. They are terrible. They're great for, you know, charging and using. They're powerful, but the disposal of them is, they're dangerous. So I'm just trying to reiterate that putting things in the proper places is great. We have a, we have a bucket for batteries there. Another great example. Oh, of, I don't know what that was supposed to be. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So when we get plastic bottles and sometimes aluminum bottles, they, they come with stuff in them still. We, we ask that people drain them, maybe rinse them if they have time. That would be great, but don't, you know, when you put liquids in there, we, because we squeeze the bottles and we don't want that to pop all over the floor and all over the machinery. There's the, so as you can guess, that's a spittoon. There's an ashtray.
Do you leave the caps on or take the caps off?
You can leave the caps on. That, that's fine. It's just, yeah, emptying the liquids out is great. And here's one that somebody thought, you know, they were doing a great thing. They put all their plastic bags into it. It, it's not recyclable. So these things, you know, that it just, it makes recycling a little more challenging. So that's why we're trying to get out, get the word out again that things have changed. Ever since China cut the world off from their sending our recycling to them, it's made it very difficult because there was hardly any places around the United States that took recycling and made new products from it because it was cheaper to send, if you can believe it, send it overseas and have it processed there. So that made us, the, the recycling markets refocus their efforts on doing things within the United States, which makes sense. We should be doing it anyway. We got in trouble because the United States got lazy, well, the, the whole world got lazy on doing it, doing recycling properly. They were throwing everything in and hoping that it gets recycled and it doesn't. So we're just, we're just hoping that people will take the time to do it properly and recycle as much as they can because we, we enjoy doing it. It's just, we, it would make it a lot easier. And with that, I won't take any more of your time. I really appreciate your time tonight, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much. If anybody has any questions, you can call me or email me or, and, or you can ask now.
Do you have to take tape off of cardboard boxes?
You do not have to take the tape off. Just take the styrofoam and any plastic that comes on the item, just take that out. We just, we just want cardboard only. And the, the only kind of cardboard we can't take are the waxy items like, you know, something that meat would come in or milk jugs, milk cartons, broth, those broth containers, anything that's waxy. We can't take, there are other programs that do take them. I don't know if your curbside takes them, but not all of them take that stuff. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
So ours goes to waste management, correct? They pick up our recycling? So they don't bring it down to you then?
We do not, they do not bring their recycling to us. It's just what we collect and what's dropped off at our, at our center. And just to let you know, I don't know if any of you have utilized our hazardous waste drop off we have now in Red Wing. We accept paint year round at the Goodyear County Recycling Center. That's through the paint care program. So it's oil and latex based paint year round. And then May through October, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM, we take hazardous waste, which would be your herbicides, your solvents, cleaning supplies, things like that. Okay? So that's one way the, the hazardous program has changed. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Willie.
That moves us on to the consent agenda tonight. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. I'll go through them real quick. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period that ended on May 11th. Item B, meeting minutes for May 2nd, 2023 city council meeting. Item C, approval of the 2023 swimming pool lifeguards. Item D, approve 2023 John Birch Park agreement with the school district. Item E, approve the Girl Scout Silver Project proposal. Item F, approve the pool coking project. Item G, approve fair board water truck request. Item H, approve police officer adjustment. And item I, approve swimming pool parking lot reconstruction bid. Are there any items that the council would like to discuss or pull down?
I'd like to pull down A.
Item A, okay. Any others?
I would like to pull down F, just for a question.
Does it need to be pulled down for a question or could that just be asked and go ahead and fire off the question?
I noticed that there were three separate categories on the cockpit and I wondered why we only did one and not all three. Two more, okay. The others will be hopefully, okay. Thank you.
There we go. So it doesn't need to be pulled down?
Nope. Thanks, Neil.
Any others from the council? Without pulling it down, I just want to say for item E, the Girl Scout project, thank you. I know this has been a long time coming. You approached me, I believe COVID was still a thing at the high school gym and we said we'll get to it when we get to it. And I'm, I'm really glad to see you guys getting to it. And a special thanks specifically to McKenzie and Riley. You guys are doing a great job. That's a great park and, you know, it's exciting to see that we have young, young people that are getting involved in the community and doing these projects for the betterment of the town. So I say thank you for that. With no other items being pulled down, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries. Moving down to council business, we will put item A that got dragged down, that will be item C. So we'll just keep the order of A and B the same. So we'll start off with John Birch Park donation agreement and the dugout plan approval. Neil, I'll let you start off and if we have any, is there any presentation tonight from the Bears or just present for?
I think all the material was within the, what you have on the website.
Perfect.
Yeah. This, this did go to park board at their last park board meeting. We've been working on this for quite some time. The dugout project is, is a great project, great community project. There's going to be some city expenses that are on, on the side, simply there's no sewer down in the bottom of that hole. We'll have to put in a grinder pump and pump it up to the top of the hill. That'll be a city cost. Of course, when we go up the hill through the alley, we'll have to redo the alley a little bit and, and there'll be some paving down in that area. We haven't quite gotten together yet with the list, but the option, the agreement for the donation, it just says they're going to do what they're going to do. If you've read that, it's, they can't leave it half done and, and no, it's, it's a great community project. I don't know if you've got anything else to add. You got the, you've got the detailed plans in front of you. There's, if there's a big set right back here behind me, if you wanted to take a look at them after the meeting. Other than that, Rich, you got anything else?
Yeah, Rich Burr, I'm here representing John Birch Park supporters. And basically, as you mentioned, our, our project that we're proposing is for the third base dugout side, it's a dugout and it's a storage area. What we're proposing is that we'll take care of the demolition of the current structure, the excavation, and then building the new structure, which have a bigger footprint than the current one. We'll still have a dugout. We'll double the size of the storage space there. We'll also add two ADA accessible bathrooms at field level. And the top of that structure will also be an overlook to any events at the park, be it ball, football, any other events that are there. There will be a wood structure on top of that as well, which will be multipurpose, serving for concessions, announcers and media, be it radio or television. And the other part of this is simply the agreement, the handshake between the City of Cannon Falls, John Birch Park supporters and what we're responsible for. You also notice that it is a, a donation agreement. So we take care of it and then it's donated to the City of Cannon Falls as an improvement to the facilities, to the park that we have. So we think it's a pretty great thing.
Yeah. Well, we want to say thank you for the donation. This project has been long running and it's exciting to see the plans and to say that construction will start here within, you know, a month. So questions, comments, concerns from the council?
So the, the wall that's being taken down, the one that's not doing well, that's the stone from the old mill, isn't it?
Yeah, that will be, that's a, a separate piece of work is the first baseline.
Okay.
But yes, that is a old stone from the stone.
I had a community member request that, that not be like taken away to be destroyed, but like kept and he wants to, with the historical society, do something with that that'll benefit the town.
We have an ideation list of how we might want to repurpose that back at the field, at entrances and also within the City of Cannon Falls.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Rich, would it be a permanent concession stand on top of the dugout or just kind of for really busy events?
I think it'll be up to the event. What I see is it would be great for football. Like people can watch the football game who are concessionaires. The people who are at the football game will be much closer to the concessions as opposed to having to walk way back around up to them. So I think it's something that'll be really good for football, but as you're probably aware, we're also on a slate to host a state amateur baseball tournament 2028. And we will need extra space for serving thousands, possibly tens of thousands of people over those three weekends. So I could see it being open. If you have enough people to have two concessions, you need it. But it'll be up to the people who are, who are hosting the event.
Okay. The ADA bathrooms on the field level, I think is a great improvement too. We've talked about football games, people have to get up to that higher level. Those bathrooms upstairs could, could use a little refurbishing too, but this project alone will really clean up that main level, like right down on the field, so. Any other questions?
Is it going to mess up your baseball this year?
Potentially. We've, we've looked at some timelines. Well, there's things that we know that'll be really difficult for us to do once we start taking things apart. Once we start the demolition, we're probably just going to move all of our games off. The Bears will be the ones who lose the games. We won't take a hit for the Legion. We won't take a hit for the high school football. So.
Any further discussion? Not hearing anything, I would take a motion to approve the John Birch Park donation agreement with the dugout plan.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
Item B, market study proposal from DDA Human Resources. Neil?
We touched base a little bit at the last council meeting. Steve and, and Lisa, as part of the, the union negotiating committee, we had discussed that in our, I think that was our first meeting or second meeting. It was. And it seems that we are in agreement that we should be doing a, a pay study. So we really know where we're at. We got three contracts that we have to negotiate this year. It's going to be a, a pretty considerable request on increases. I think your guess and our, my guess would be different. So why not get a professional group in here, human, human resources group in here to give us what things are out there? You know, what is, what is Cannon Falls area, people of the like paying out there? So with that said, we talked about a, they'll put it in a grid like we have now and run it through the pay equity system for a compliance check, which is big because if we were to do this by ourselves and all of a sudden it's, we're way out of compliance, we'll be writing that check later. And with this, before we get done with it, it will be in compliance. Otherwise, we won't bring it to you. So that, that says a lot right there. State of Minnesota, if anybody knows what the pay equity system does, it's, it's equal pay among genders and it, we have to be in compliance. Every three years, we're tested. We have to send in the, the information and whether we're in compliance. And if we're not into compliance, we will, we have to be in compliance. Otherwise, the carrot or the stick is always LGA. That's where they get you. So $10,100, they're going to do 23 full-time employees. That's, I handed them the list that we have to do with pay equity. That's what they will do. I don't know if anybody else got, got any questions?
Well, I, I think it's a good thing and Lisa and I, we're talking about it with, with Neil and it sounds like a lot of money, but we can use it for all three of the upcoming contracts. So now you're talking a third of that each for each contract. And we can't pick numbers out of the air anymore. We gotta, we gotta do it according to the area and, and as far as this, Neil gave me a short course on this, this equity thing. And wow, that's tough. If we get the professionals to say, here's, here's what it is, you know, I think it's a, be a lot easier. It's, it's going to be tense enough negotiating with all those people. If we got a little bit of background or numbers to work with, I think it'd be a little easier.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Steve. There was, you know, talking with somebody that says you follow the data. The more data you have, the more perspective you have for that argument and definitely for renegotiating, but also for the job postings even that we have right now to try to see where are we at and to compare apples to apples to say this position, what is the value and what does it mean to our community? And are we, you know, because if we aren't at scale, we're not going to get the applicants and the, the good employees are going to land somewhere else. So any other questions or comments?
Are we required to use, like if the amounts come in and they're quite a bit higher than anticipated, in a way we're, I don't want to say stuck, but we're kind of obligated. You know, we paid for the study, that's the amount we got to pay. It may end up being more than we were anticipating. Is that a worry that you would have?
You can do it many ways. This is guidance. This is a, a study that shows you where you should be. I've seen them break it in two. I've seen them not follow it, which is not a good idea. We have a situation where we can't keep police officers in squad cars right now. I think to get a fair and equitable contract, we should follow what the recommendation is. But that's all coming down to budgeting and what that number is at the end. And with department heads actually getting together and saying, hey, I can't get employees. Look, we're missing a couple of public works people right now. The zoning administrator, one application that has come in in two weeks. So I, I think we have to listen to what they're going to tell us so we can be, we'll be on the same playing field and so we're not behind. I don't know what that answer is right now, but you can do it many ways. You can, you can enact it in one year and, and get it done. You can do it over two years. You don't have to do it at all, but the repercussions of not doing it all might shock you.
Do we have a timeline for how long it'll take 'em?
They'll start, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I don't know how long it'll take 'em.
Okay.
I can ask that question tomorrow.
Can we ask for, I mean, yeah, ask, but like, we want it in thirty days, or?
ASAP.
Yeah.
Right. And I already told them that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, you made the comment, like, um, if I heard you correctly, something about every three, three years?
Every three years.
So, instead of paying $10,000 every three years, why are we not doing $6,000 annually, so that we don't have to get in a situation where we are with our public works and our police department? I mean, we're in a world of hurt right now. It's not a, it's not, I mean, I'm the one, not I'm, I've been part of all of these interviews, and it's getting...
It's exhausting.
Yeah, it's, it's not a good place to be, and I feel like if we were ahead of this and doing this, you know, they're saying, their suggestion is to do a smaller maintenance annually, three years from now, we're not gonna be in the same spot where we're doing another $10,000, and we're $20,000 behind in pay. That's my opinion.
So, what if we do, I mean, we clearly, we'll do one, you know, well, let's say we do one, then do we the next year? Should we do the maintenance? Is that how you would do it, or?
There is cities that have that, and in your, like, in your packet there, it's got references that show there's cities that do the maintenance.
Okay.
Um, we can talk about that after we get this all done and squared away.
Yeah, 'cause Golden Valley does the maintenance. Maintenance.
Um, and this is purely an ignorant question. Um, I know that when we were looking at the police pay, um, it didn't seem very difficult for people to find out what other areas, you know, comparable, we're paying. Do we, is there no appetite for doing that on our own? We really want somebody to tell us what it is? I'm just asking the question.
Can we, like?
Because...
Not we, but someone from the city call, and be like, hey, Red Wing, what's your pay scale for, or, like, a city similar to us, I guess?
So, if you do, if you've done a number of contracts, they typically will come in with a group of cities that maybe you don't agree with?
Okay.
Well, do you think if we come in with a group of cities, do you think they're gonna agree with the group that we pick? Normally not, uh, simply because you're gonna, you're gonna pick the ones that favor your side.
Sure.
To get an unbiased, an opinion, where you say, we had a pro-professional human resource group put this together for us, they did the, uh, uh, the data, it's kinda hard to argue with that one. And it, and it, and that's what happens, and I've done a lot of them, they'll, the, the union guys will come in with a group of cities, this is what they pay. Normally, you can look at them and say, you know, that probably isn't quite accurate as, as what I feel would be the right cities to pick, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm. And so, that's where, uh, say, you would pick Red Wing, I would pick Dundas, right? Simply because Dundas is probably gonna pay less. So, getting an unbiased, uh, unbiased data helps us to come to terms.
Like, population and...
Right, right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it's quite accurate for Cannon Falls' population 4,000 to, to pick Red Wing.
Right.
So, um, but would we pick Dundas? Probably not.
All right.
Or would we pick a, a town of 2,000? That's probably not quite accurate either. But we would, as the management side, pick the lower, simply because it favors us. And that's why these guys do a lot of these studies. It just gives, puts all of us on the same field, so we can move forward. Otherwise, we probably would have a tough time moving forward.
Any other questions or discussion from the council?
Uh, and just, it was something that Laura said earlier. I know we did this study back in 2017, which is six years ago, and it there, too, at that point, they found we were really, you know, on the low-low, off the pale s- pay scale. Uh, and so, I, I, I really do want us to look at that yearly maintenance or whatever, because I keep thinking, I'm assuming as we keep falling behind every three or six years, it doesn't do us any good in terms of retaining good employees.
And you can think about that maintenance, if you lose one good employee in 15 years of intellectual property, walk out that door, uh, we were talking about that today, um, you've just lost a ton of, of, uh, experience.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you can hang on to that employee, simply by raising up your scale to the local area, right?
Right.
Um, you're gonna hang on to him, as long as, uh, as you treat the employee, respectively, of course, and, and there's no other obstacles.
And, I'm sorry, but my, the website won't load, it was up before, but isn't the math roughly, you said 5,000 per year for the maintenance, but then 10,000 every three, so we're talking about a difference of $5,000 every three years?
Do you really have, no, I, well, and the, good, good clarif- clarification, because my opinion would be that if you're doing, once you do the ongoing maintenance, you wouldn't need to do the 10,000.
Correct.
Right.
Right, but that's still $5,000 more every three years, 5,000 a year.
Oh, I see what you're trying to say.
Yeah, so it costs you more, but, but what Neil was saying is, it's, is $5,000 a drop in the bucket if you lose somebody, so is it better to have that be an annual payment, so that you stay up to...
So, doing it, doing it annually is gonna cost $3,000 more a year, right?
Yeah, if you...
Because it's 10,000 for three years, so 3,300 dollars, or 6,000, 5,800, 6,000 annually, so you're paying 3,000 extra to do it annually. So, if you think of it that way, it's not even the 6,000 a year. So, you're paying 3,000 a year to be ahead of the curve and to try to retain talent.
Yeah. And keep up with pay scales.
Me, that's nothing. I mean, not nothing.
For our annual budget.
It's a lot for taxpayers, I didn't mean it like that, but 3,000 to retain employees and not have the turnover and the havoc that we're dealing with now is worth it to me.
$1,500 to run them through a psych and a, and a physical, right? How many of, how many of them have we done this year?
Done a lot.
A few. Sure.
Right?
So, there you go.
And then to, and then to put a duty belt and a uniform on 'em, I don't know what that cost, a couple thousand?
So, af- after we get done with this initial one, I definitely think a lot of us would like to explore that.
Yep.
Maintenance, on an annual basis, just to keep us from being where we're at.
Being in this situation.
Yeah. It's a, we're, obviously, we're not voting on that tonight, but general consensus of the council, I see, seems to be in approval. We'll have to make sure to keep that on the agenda, uh, in our forecast for the future.
I'll bring it back as soon as, uh, maybe with the, the study, and, you know, as a proposal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great discussion. Uh, so, do I have a motion to approve the market study proposal for E- uh, DDA Human Resources?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Gesmi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Laura, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Which brings us to item C, which was item A in the consent, the just and correct claims. Lisa?
Yes, so I was looking through the accounts payable, and we paid Bear, Hoff Berry, again, for $1,340 for data requests. So, then I went back, 'cause I kinda like to nerd out once in a while, and, okay, so that was, when, that was a lot, 1,340. So, back in January, there were two data requests that had to go to the attorneys, um, one for 1,5750, and another for 2,4875, for a total of 4,0625, and then the two in March that I brought up initially. So, total, $1,878.75 in data requests that have been sent to the attorney by one person. Okay, just making sure it's all by just the same person? Okay. And that's not counting the ones that we do in-house. How's that going? Are we getting through? Bravo, city.
Neil, a question to go along with that. It doesn't show on the just and correct claims, but is there a way for you to quantify our local city hall manpower hours? 'Cause obviously, as Lisa said, the document for our lawyer...
That was my next question.
Okay.
I used to, I used to keep track. I'm too busy right now to be running around and figuring out how many hours I spend on this, shoving this stuff around. Uh, so, I've got quite a list from last year that I kept track on, on how many hours I personally spent on it. Um, it's quite a list.
I bet.
Mm-hmm. Got the names, and back then, there was a couple of people that were doing data requests, so I got the names of who, who and what, um, I could show ya.
Okay. I would like to see that someday.
It's probably not everyone, but it was when I remembered to write it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like there's quite a few, so...
I could show you the file box, too, that I, uh, I make copies of every data request, so I know that I got 'em, and it's quite a file box.
Okay.
Not to interrupt, I'm glad that question was in, in line with what your thinking was, too, but when we have gone to League of Minnesota Cities events, sometimes conversations pop on, you ask this question, and I don't have, it's just an anecdote, I don't have the data in front of me, but...
Right.
Similar-sized towns, when you're sitting and having, you know, a meal and stuff together, you ask about this, and there are some towns that say they'll get one or two data requests all year, and it's usually over a fairly controversial issue or something that's pressing.
Right.
And, uh, so these numbers, you know, we're sitting here talking about trying to compare ourself to other communities that are in the same area, uh, and spending, and negotiations, and all this. Our data request expenditures are probably that of a, when you put the entire year together, it's probably that of a full-time employee, and I, I'd be willing to put money on the table that says there's a lot of communities in our entire region that don't match that.
Right.
It is a burden.
I would say.
Uh, with that said, uh, any other further discussion, Lisa?
No, I just wanted to point that out, 'cause it seems to be a money drain and a time drain, and probably a lot of added stress to the staff. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Good point.
Thank you.
Uh, I would accept a motion to approve the item C, just and correct claims, for the period that ended on May 11th.
So moved.
Motion from Johnson, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. That moves us to our reports. Maggie, you've got a very captive audience tonight.
[laughing]
Good evening, council and mayor. Um, just a couple updates quick from the chamber. In case you have not heard, we have moved offices, so we're in our new location now, 127, um, Fourth Street North, so on the other side of the alley, by the bakery. Um, a couple updates on things we've been working on, our Discover Guides are out now, so these, uh, we've got over 5,000 of them that we ordered, and they'll be distributed to communities around Cannon Falls, and then businesses within Cannon Falls. Something new, our, our window clings. So, we just finished this project, um, a while back, there was a group of business leaders who had envisioned this, and so we just completed it. Um, so essentially, it's just a window sticker with a QR code, uh, visitors from Cannon Falls can scan it, and it brings them to a map of historic downtown Cannon Falls, um, on the chamber's website, and it lists different places that they might be interested in visiting, and then they're able to kinda toggle back and forth on the chamber website to different, um, ideas or adventures in Cannon Falls also. So, those, we're working on getting those distributed, so those can be found, um, on windows and doors of businesses in Cannon. Um, and while I'm on that, I would encourage you guys to check out the Sherpa page, if you haven't, it's on the cannonfalls.org, so the chamber's website, under visitor information. Um, and it's essentially, um, a page where you can find adventures and itineraries of things to do in Cannon Falls, so there's people who have come and, um, done these adventures, and then documented them, and posted them on this page. Um, it's a really great resource for people who are visiting Cannon Falls as well. Laura Qualley has worked extra hard on this, so I encourage you guys to check that out. Um, moving on to events, June 1st is our Fun Fest, we've got a full agenda, Tiger Rees is performing, score goal on the mayor, rock climbing wall, uh, fire truck, or fire department demonstration, celebrity trike races are back, and then we're going to do a short ceremony to honor our hometown heroes as well, and there'll be free hot dogs, snow cones, food trucks, activities, so hopefully we can get good weather for that. June 19th is the golf tournament for the chamber, we're still looking for teams and sponsorships for that. And lastly, the Cannon Valley Fair medallion hunt began on Monday, May 15th, and so every Monday at 10:00 AM, you can find a clue on the fair's website, along with the rules, um, and wristbands are now on sale at Cannon Valley Specialties and Cannonbells for rides, so, that is all I have.
I have a question, Maggie.
Yeah.
Were you guys gonna do the coupon book again?
We are, yes, that is on my to-do list.
Okay.
Yes, next on my checklist, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie.
Uh, the return of Fun Fest, and, uh, how, are we gonna put an age limit? I don't want Derek stepping up to kick that soccer ball at me, I'm, let's have fun, grown-ups, watch out. Uh, we're gonna go through the meetings that were held since our last council meeting. Uh, the EDA met on Thursday, May 4th, uh, fairly quick meeting, we went through our financials, uh, looked at the loan payments, recalculated, uh, our policy with Tillian, and then had a quick, uh, presentation from the art.org building, and I apologize, the name's escaping me, David, it was David, but, uh, art.org business, uh, was represented, they showed us, uh, what they're doing with the building and what they're using the grants for, so. That's it for EDA. Uh, Park Board also met on May 4th. Is that Derek?
I was not there. Oh, I can do it. Okay. Uh, of course, Girl Scout Silver Award, um, that was here tonight, um, they gave the presentation to the Park Board, uh, medallion hunt was approved in the parks, um, the John Birch Park user agreement that was on the consent agenda, and the pool caulking is what we talked about, and then, uh, um, the John Birch Park, uh, donation agreement, and most of the stuff that was on the agenda tonight.
Wonderful. Uh, Library Board met on May 8th.
I did not go, 'cause it was my birthday.
Well, happy birthday!
Diane says she's got notes on it, so...
Yes, I did go.
There we are.
I must have known it was your birthday.
You must have. Happy birthday to me.
Anyway, the summer reading program for the kids is Find Your Voice, last year, they had over 500 kids that did it, and they're expecting even more this year. Uh, library's becoming a community hub, they've got legal aid bus that will be there in the parking lot, as well as the blood mobile. The Boy Scouts, uh, at the time it wa- was building, now it has been built, the little free food pantry, which is in front of the library. Um, they did, uh, spend a bit of time talking about, uh, the budget thing, their board directed the library director to come up with a realistic budget that looked at, you know, appropriate wage increase, which I'm assuming is gonna come out of the study, whatever, healthcare increases, and their copier lease comes due on March 24th, and they're assuming that will increase. June and July meetings will be at 5:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go around the horn, Sarah, do you have anything? Joe?
Well, we've come to that week, the final week of school, so we're gonna start seeing kids on their bikes, hopefully, and everybody being safe, but we just want everybody to realize there's gonna be kids at all hours of the day out enjoying our beautiful town, so, drive safe and stay aware.
Yeah, thank you. Neil, you're good? Council will start, Laura?
Uh, I probably, I just wanted to kinda re- reiterate, um, that if people continue to have concerns regarding the go-kart track, that they should, they should contact the Cannon Valley Fair Board. At the last meeting, the, we had representatives here that said they're more than willing to talk to anybody about it, contact information is on their website, um, they invited people to join their meetings, so just kinda wanted to reiterate that. Um, and also that we received, um, legal information, that that was more of a, a state issue, not a city issue, so it's really kind of out of our hands, which is what we learned at last council meeting, so just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lisa?
Nothing.
Ryan?
I'm excited for that John Birch Park thing.
There you go.
It's gonna be cool.
Nice, nice.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll see if they, uh, I'm not sure of the plans of if they're gonna need volunteers, but honestly, if they need labor and they need people to help, I think that there's a lot of people in this community that have shown interest, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great project. Yeah, it's a great project. Cool? Yeah. Derek?
Diane?
Nope.
Steve?
Me neither.
Just a reminder, for those who are interested, another issue that is not necessarily a city issue, but residents are talking about it on social media and contacting us, the noise from the Veterans Park that happened this last weekend, there is a meeting at the tent at the Veterans Park, just off of County Road 14, just south of town, Thursday night at 7:00 PM. I believe they said that it's open to the public, and that they are invited if they have issues, would like to go and talk. So, they're coming to the table, they're willing to talk to people about that, so if you're interested, or if you have concerns, Thursday night at 7:00. Okay? Hearing nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's a race between Lisa and Derek, so we'll give it...
I'll second.
Derek, a second from Lisa, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.